And we're back. Okay, please stand for pledge allegiance to remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under I, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for your gifts. We ask your presence and guidance tonight as our city council convenes to do the work of our Belvidere community. Today's world is fraught with crime, dishonesty, selfishness, and lack of faith, whipped into a frenzy by political extremists and by media to serve dubious agendas. Even our respectful community feels the pressures of discontent, uncertainty, and fear engendered by those who serve dark masters. As we work together this evening, let us remember that unity and respect for one another will set a standard for the community we jointly serve. We are all diminished by that which injures any one of us. Help us to make sound decisions that benefit all of our citizens promoting harmony, happiness, and safety for all those that call Belvidere home. These things we ask in your holy name, amen. Under public comment, we have no one registered this evening, which brings the number four, approval of minutes. Approval of minutes of the regular meeting of the Belvidere City Council of March 15th, 2021 is presented, I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Flurry, second by Porter. Questions, comments, or proposed amendments to the minutes as presented. Hearing none, all those in favor of approval will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye; those opposed, nay.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Minutes are approved unanimously. Brings us to item number five, and I'll read the official certification and publication in the state of Illinois for our public hearing concerning the annual budget for 2021/2022 fiscal year. Rock Valley Publishing LLC certifies that it is the publisher of the Belvidere Republican that such paper is a secular newspaper of general circulation in said county, has been continuously published for more than 50 weeks prior to the first publication of the attached notice, and is a newspaper defined by 715 ILCS 5.5. Hereby further certifies that a notice, of which the attached notice is a true copy, has been legally published in said newspaper one time for one consecutive week, that the first publication was the 18th day of March 2021, the last publication was the 18th day of March 2021. This notice was also placed on a statewide public notice website as required by 715 ILCS 5/2.1. Signed Danielle Johnson for Rock Valley Publishing Committee. The annual budget ordinance hearing. Notice is hereby given that the corporate authority of the city of Belvidere, Illinois will hold a public hearing at 7:00 PM, Monday, April 5th, 2021, on ordinance 529H, the proposed annual budget ordinance for the 2021/2022 fiscal year. Public hearing shall take place in the city council chambers, 401 Whitney Boulevard, Belvidere, Illinois. Copies of the proposed annual budget ordinance are accessible for the examination by the public during business hours at the office of the Belvidere City Clerk, 401 Whitney Boulevard, Belvidere, Illinois. City of Belvidere, Illinois, Sarah Turnipseed, City Clerk, and as we have before said, published in the Belvidere Republican, March 18th, 2021. Do we have anyone who, well, it is 7:12, we are opening the public hearing at 7:12. Do we have anyone who wants to make comment during the public hearing timeframe? Okay, having no one to make comment, we will close the public hearing at 7:13. So be it. Under special messages and proclamations, we have a proclamation which I will read this evening. It's a fair housing proclamation. Do I have someone in the audience that wants to come forward? I'm not numbered. Welcome all. Proclamation. Okay, proclamation. Whereas the city of Belvidere finds that safe and affordable housing is part of the American dream and a goal of all Illinois residents, and whereas individuals in the state of Illinois have a right to choose where to live, purchase, or rent property without discrimination based on race, color, religion, age, sex, familial status, marital status, national origin or ancestry, disability, sexual orientation, gender identity, military status, unfavorable military discharge, and order of protection status, and whereas federal and state laws affirm the right of every person to equal housing opportunity, and whereas fair housing is a positive community good, and whereas economic stability, community health, and human relations in all communities and the state of Illinois are improved by diversity and integration, and whereas the talents of nonprofit organizations, housing service providers, financial institutions, elected officials, state agencies, and others must be combined to promote and preserve integration, fair housing, and equal opportunity. Whereas realtors locally and nationally pledge to provide equal professional service without regard to race, color, religion, sex, handicap, familial status, or national origin of any prospective client, customer, or the residents of any community. Whereas realtors locally and nationally pledge to affirmatively pursue business practices that will ensure that everyone is welcome and no one is excluded. Whereas realtors locally and nationally have incorporated affirmative fair housing practices into the Realtor Code of Ethics by which all realtors must abide. Now therefore, the city of Belvidere, Illinois, has hereby proclaimed the month of April 2021 as National Fair Housing Month in the city of Belvidere, to establish our community as an open and inclusive community committed to fair housing and to promote appropriate activities by private and public entities intended to provide or advocate for integration and equal housing opportunities for all residents and prospective residents of our city. Hereby declared by Mike Chamberlain, Mayor of Belvidere, by my signature on this petition. Who would like to talk for the Realtors? Neely Erickson will visit with us from the realtor.
I have very brief comments, it's just mostly a thank you. So, good evening, Mayor Chamberlain, thank you for allowing us a few moments to address you and the city of Belvidere council members. I am Neely Erickson, Illinois Realtors Government Affairs Director for the Rockford Area Realtors and Belvidere Board of Realtors. I am joined here today with CEO Connor Brown, Ginger Shreenan, who is a local Realtor, and also serves as a Board of Director for the Illinois Realtors State Association, and Connie Kelly, who is a Realtor Team Leader and Office Manager. We are here today to thank you for recognizing April as Fair Housing Month with your proclamation. April is Fair Housing Month, which is especially important to the real estate industry. We honor this month to express our recommitment to expanding equal access to housing opportunities for all. As an industry, we recognize the history and involvement that has contributed to segregation and to discrimination. We recognize we must continue efforts to affirmatively further fair housing. As an industry, we refuse to tolerate noncompliance to fair housing. A broker can face thousands of dollars in a fine, lose their license in perpetuity, and practice in no state. Individuals who believe they are a victim of fair housing violation can file agreements with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, the Illinois Department of Human Rights, and also with the Ombudsman Program through the Illinois Realtors. That is just to name a few locations if they believe they have been a victim of a fair housing violation. The National Association of Realtors adopted within our industry code of ethics, which prohibits realtors from using harassing hate speech, epithets, or slurs. This is not just applicable when engaged in real estate activities. Finally, many of the ordinances, zoning, and legislative issues that we advocate for are rooted in the promotion of equal housing opportunity for all, inclusion, and affordability for all. We recognize that proclamations and advertisements cannot end discrimination. It will only be through accountability, culture change, and further fair housing training that we will be able to overcome these challenges. To that end, again, we thank you for recognizing Fair Housing Month and for your work in representing the community of Belvidere. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good to see you all. Thanks for coming this evening. That brings us to item number seven, approval of expenditures, of which there are none this evening. Number eight, committee reports and minutes of city officers. We have the minutes of the community of the whole, public safety, finance, and personnel of March 22nd, 2021, as presented. May I have a motion to approve, please?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Arivolo, second by Frank. Questions, comments, proposed amendments to the minutes as presented. Hearing none, all those in favor of approval will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye; those opposed, nay.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe? Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Committee reports and minutes approved unanimously. Under number nine, unfinished business, we have ordinance 524H, a second reading, which I believe we'll leave on the table, it concerns video gaming at 600 Logan Avenue. So. That brings us to item B, ordinance 529H, a second reading, ordinance budgeting for all corporate purposes for the city of Belvidere, Boone County, Illinois, for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2021, and ending April 30th, 2022. I'll entertain a motion to approve. Motion by Snow, may I have a second?
Make an amendment to it?
Give me a second first.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, no, we'll go ahead and do the amendment for, go ahead.
Reference in our memo, just like the motion to amend Exhibit B of the budget ordinance by replacing it with the revised Exhibit B prepared by the Finance Director and attached hereto.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a second for an amendment as per the attached change. All those in favor of the, if you want to discuss it further? The amendment, anybody want to discuss the amendment as attached? Alderman Stevens?
I noticed we've got a pretty good-sized raise for Abby Myers. It's due to a bunch of, you know, the court proceedings going to the court for traffic court, is this going to become a permanent part of her job to warrant this?
Attorney Drell?
There's more than just the court as far as additional duties, but that portion may become permanent. When COVID hit, they moved the traffic detail to the community building on a temporary basis, where it's going to actually go back to the courthouse sometime in June. At that time, the judges requested, is probably the best word, that we have an additional person in the courthouse to assist with moving people through the courtroom. Beginning in the summer of 2019, the Illinois Supreme Court modified the protocols in all criminal courts, including the traffic courts in the state of Illinois. In the past, where I had to simply draft one order, pass that up to the judge, judge would take care of the defendant, and I'd be on to the next person and working them through the system, we now have to do two orders, one of which is actually typewritten on the computer, which means I then have to go from defendant to handwritten to computer to judge, and it was taking way too long to get them out of the courtroom. So the judges request that we add that second person to court and to handle the computer portions of those duties. When we get back to the courthouse, they're actually keeping all the same protocols, just moving to a new location. So my guess is yes, at least for the foreseeable future, I'll be needing some assistance in the courtroom.
Okay. Other question, who's she related to in City Hall? Is she somebody's relative, or, that's my next question?
Not to my knowledge, no.
No, nobody in City Hall.
Well, I believe maybe relative, but she's related to somebody in Public Works by marriage.
Okay. I'd been said something about it, so I was going to ask.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Alderman Frank, and then Alderman Porter.
Is she salary? Oh, she's not.
No, she's hourly.
Okay, so hourly.
And there was additional other job duties assigned to her in this last year. They include workers' compensation processing and reporting, OSHA reporting, gasoline invoicing, and then attending the court calls.
So this is all new stuff added on to her?
Yes.
Okay, because I'm just, I hate to see what's gonna, if there's gonna bring any jealousy with her getting such a big raise as compared to the others or not, because, you know.
I would not anticipate that it's going to bring any jealousy because someone's taking on additional job responsibilities.
And we have taken some of the job responsibilities from the deputy clerk and then assigned them to the assistant clerk.
Ms. Tobin?
That was going to be part of what I was going to say is, the Wonder Woman deputy clerk who's retiring, you know, especially somebody new coming in, even with all of her experience, it's not feasible for that person to take on every single thing that the current deputy clerk was doing, which was part of the reason for the lower salary for that employee, and then some of the job duties in turn going over to the assistant clerk, so.
Additional questions? Alderman Porter?
Well, that answered my question, I just was wondering what the additional duties were, but I wanted to ask a question here, are we approving this whole page right now? Or are we just approving this part we're talking about, because I have a question on the page that's different than what we're talking about for the deputy clerk?
We would be looking to approve the entire page, so we need Exhibit A. If you approve the entire budget tonight, we'd be approving Exhibit A and Exhibit B.
Go ahead, please.
Okay. First of all, Becky, I hear that you're leaving, I'm sorry to see you that you're going, and hope that things work out for you at your new job. And, but one question I did have, I noticed that they kept the salary position for the finance officer at $85,000 for this year, so wouldn't we be hiring somebody at a starting level for that? I mean, you know, lower entry-level type job depending on their experience?
Well, I can tell you, we advertised it at 75 to 85. That's what's in all the advertisements that we've placed out for the position. I can also tell you that at the 85, it's still extremely low. There is a similar position available in DeKalb County right now at 115 to 130. So even at the 85, it's going to be tough to fill, but we do have a range in there of 75 to 85.
Piggybacking on that, just as a heads up, that position was advertised, I want to say, starting about two, two and a half weeks ago. We have not received one single inquiry of interest in that position at this time.
And I'll speak to that briefly. We have enjoyed the luxury of having top-notch people at salaries well below comparable salaries for a municipality our size or any size across our region. And so when we have to replace someone, and particularly someone in the finance department, we don't particularly want to have somebody that is like third banana someplace else come in and try to run the department. Becky has run finance all by herself, and with an occasional summer intern, which have helped, in a department that should have at least two other people. And so I think we've all gotten a little bit spoiled here about the fact that we've had such excellent people in these positions, and they have been willing to work for the salaries that we've offered, primarily because they love this community. And so I think we need to be cognizant of the fact, as we reach out to replace people in our community structure for administration, it's going to cost us more money to get competent people. That's only the reality of the marketplace and the reality of we want to be able to hire good people with experience and expertise. Okay. So where are we?
I have some questions.
Yes, Marcia.
Thank you. So, I've noticed, how long has our community development administrative assistant, Ms. Crawford, been with the city?
She started as a part-time employee, and then she became full-time, I believe, six years ago. Yeah, six years ago, I was already here.
So we're basically going to give this assistant clerk, who just hired this year, $700 less than somebody that's been here a very long time. I don't, you know, I have a problem with that. She's also going to be getting paid more than the fire chief's administrative assistant. And I see that the police department has two assistants, one that was hired in 2007, that only makes $34,000 a year, and a brand-new one for $33,900 that is, you know, basically less than $300 less than somebody that's been there since 2007. So I'm a little confused at how these raises are being handed out to people.
Becky?
And I kind of addressed that this has been a problem, and I think the last couple hires, which have happened over the last year, year and a half, the department heads have tried to hire in at a rate that is, that they're able to get better candidates and a better workforce. Some of these salaries, we've been trying to play catch-up, the one you're just talking about from community development, was hired in at, is either $1,250 an hour or $1,300, and if we were to go back and look, we have given her two significant raises over the last five years to try and get that salary bumped up. One was a really significant raise, I want to say three years ago, and then last year she was given an additional raise because she became a planning technician, and she can, she can do more at the counter. So I think we've noticed that and been trying to get those up, and I believe the police chief, we've had numerous conversations about trying to get those raises up, and he did not think that this was the appropriate time due to, due to everything that was going on with the budget, I'm sure he'd be happy to discuss that, though.
Chief?
Yes, thank you. I don't know if the aldermen remember, but at the beginning of the budget process, I submitted some comparables that ultimately showed that our administrative assistants were grossly underpaid, and I prepared something just for addressing that specific fact. Wanted to provide some perspective on the proposed wage reduction for non-union employees, because I have administrative staff that do an outstanding job for the city. They were essential to the day-to-day operations of the police department here during the peak of the pandemic, every day since making our citizens, making sure our citizens were being taken care of. At the beginning of the budget process, I presented each of you with a wage comparison for the police department's administrative assistants. I wanted you to see what the current market was paying for similar type of work in the area, so you could see that the same thing that I suspected when I had to post for Maria Casas's position. I discovered the communities in our area were paying thousands of dollars more for similar work responsibilities. The village of Cherry Valley, which has a population of under 3,000 people, pays $2,000 to $3,000 more for an entry-level position than the city of Belvidere for their administrative assistants. Just to be average with the comparables, our police department would have to pay roughly $8,000 more a year for an entry-level position for administrative assistant. The police department is very fortunate to have the quality of personnel and its administrative staff, and when looking at the wage comparisons, our administrative staff is the lowest paid of them all. I know some of you are concerned with the optics of 3% raises in a time when some members of our community are having to resort to food donations to feed their family. However, some of your employees are only one unexpected expense away from having to do the same thing. As it was explained to me, the only reason 3% raises were ever agreed to was because the cost of the city was mitigated by the increase in insurance premiums that all employees are paying. When I did the math for my administrative staff, 2% raises as proposed, really only nets an average of 1.5%, and that's if they have individual insurance coverage. That literally is 22 cents an hour for one of my staff. For those administrative assistants with family insurance coverage, they would be getting less than 1/4 of a percent raise. I'm hesitant to even bring up the command staff, but when I look at the future, I have to consider the unintended consequences of reducing the wage gap between the command staff and the first-line supervisors. No matter ultimately what's decided about non-union increases, the first-line supervisors by contract will get their 3% increases. Currently, deputy chiefs are 6% above the top-page supervisor, the chief is 6% above the deputy chiefs, and I still have sergeants that make more with overtime than I do. Going forward, if you continue to take away from the first-line supervisor that incentive of additional wage percentage, when it comes time to start replacing those command staff positions, they're going to start asking themselves, why would they want the extra stress, responsibility, and liability? The deputy chief, or even the chief's position, when they can stay right where they're at, make more money, and have the protection of the contract and the union. All of the departments within the city take great pride in developing the next generation of leaders, and it would be a shame to miss out on qualified candidates, or worse yet, train them for another department that pays more. Now, thank, I appreciate your time in listening to me on that matter, but yeah, in order for our department to even be average, we would have to pay, it was 24% more than what we currently pay. And when I brought it forward to begin with, I recognized the nature of the, you know, COVID crisis and what that potentially means financially for the city, and that's why I didn't ask for a pay increase. But I can't in good conscience stand by and see a pay reduction, not when the pay increase is not only deserved, but is really one of the things that keeps us competitive, because if we continue to fall behind, those quality people that, you know, we're seeing now and are struggling to keep are going to be even harder to find.
If it were a matter of that the city coffers were challenged by giving these minimal raise increases to people, that would be a different story. But we're not. We have an extremely healthy city general fund. We have been very fortunate that we have not suffered as dramatically as a lot of communities with COVID. The idea of, and the chief illustrated it beautifully, 22 cents an hour, right? We have, over the last eight years, tried to systematically raise the basic wages of the people who have been with us for a long time, and every time we come to the budget, we come to the same thing, no raises, no raises, no raises. And at some point in time, we'll lose employees, people will not want to come here to work. It's the same thing when we consistently, and even in good times, vote down a very small increase in our levy. If eventually you keep voting down everything that brings revenue into the city of Belvidere, what will happen is what happened in the early 2000s, where our infrastructure was in ruins, we didn't have the money to hire qualified people, and it was the hard work of Fred Burton for several years, and myself, that have made sure that we have always had the money to do what we need to do, to fix our roads, to have Public Works have the right equipment, to have our fire department and our police department. have the right equipment, to have our fire department and our police department equipped to be the best around. And so you can't constantly cut everything that is a cost and hope to succeed as a city. And I think this is very, very clear in this year. The other thing I wanted to say about folks that were, are getting raises, everybody here worked all through COVID. We weren't off and at home, we were facing it every single day. In fact, we had, we closed City Hall for a period of time, just so we could protect ourselves from, from getting an infection that would sweep through our, our ranks. So this is, is a great city that is well-run, and we have great employees, and if we want to keep them, these small wages increases are more than earned and more than deserved. Okay, yes, Alderman Flurry?
So, speaking of that, you know, I understand that we want to find ways to save the city money, but I don't think this is the right way of reducing the pay raise from three percent to two percent. I asked Becky to help me run the numbers here, but that difference between two percent, two percent and three percent is roughly twelve thousand dollars, and talking to the public works director, that's about one city block or three hundred feet of road. So although we all like smooth roads and we want to have our public, uh, our infrastructure taken care of, I think when we look at twenty people that are not in the union, only getting two percent, I think that does devalue them, you know, and someone earlier said something about making, you know, other employees jealous, but, you know, when you are able to devalue twenty people because they're non-union and only give them two percent versus three percent when they've had a, uh, increase in their health insurance, I think that's setting a bad precedent that eventually, although we do have loyalty in this city, I think eventually people are gonna leave and go elsewhere where they can make considerably more. You know, just looking at, um, some comparisons just at a police chief, you know, the, the median around here for the same roughly twenty-five thousand people is, you know, a hundred and forty thousand dollars, which is well above what our current chief is making. And I think, you know, looking at this budget that we've had this year, we have a balanced budget, we had all of our department heads speak to them and cover everything in detail about what our budget is, and I don't see anything where there is, you know, any kind of fat or excess within the budget. I think it's a trim fiscal budget, and I think it's, you know, doing a disservice to our leaders and to the assistants that work with them when we don't give them their full value.
Marcia, did you have additional comments?
I did. Thank you. Um, so Mayor Chamberlain, I know that you are well-aware of what our taxpayers are experiencing as indicated by the long lines every week at the local food bank dispersment facilities and our pop-up food pantries. And I shouldn't have to tell anyone on this council that the people experiencing the food insecurities are the same people who are going to witness their hard-earned tax dollars being spent on raises to individuals who they themselves haven't, were never, and are not, in danger of losing one red cent of pay throughout the entirety of this pandemic. The, the non-union salaries were already increased and passed by two percent. The, the motion amendment on the table now is to give an assistant clerk that has been there less than one year, a pay raise up to nearly equivalent of Ms. Crawford, our community development administrative assistant, who has been there a long time, and above what both of our administrative assistants make in the fire, or in the police department and the one in the fire department. I will not be giving somebody less than one year a bump up to be making more than people that have been there a long period of time or equal to that. I, I, I can't do that faithfully, knowing that our taxpayers, who will be the ones on the hook for paying this, um, are hurting. So I'll be voting no on this amendment.
Okay, thank you. Additional questions or comments on the amendment?
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Sure.
Based on a couple of comments and the way we've gone around, perhaps the clerk can restate the motion, because the motion, as I recall, was to replace Exhibit B in the ordinance that's set for first reading with the Exhibit B that was attached to the memo presented by the finance director, which reduced the overall across-the-board raises from three percent to two percent. So defeating the motion will actually put in place, or leave in place, the three percent raises for everybody. But I ask the clerk to restate the motion.
To, without the two percent?
No, the motion is made by Alderman Flurry.
Okay, it will be, motion to amend Exhibit B of the budget ordinance by replacing it with revised Exhibit B prepared by the finance director and attached here, too.
Becky?
So is, is that referring to the three percent instead of the two percent?
Two percent.
So the two percent is what was attached to everybody's?
Correct. The motion on the floor is to reduce the across-the-board, across-the-board raises from three percent to two percent. It includes the increase for the, um, assistant city clerk. However, if you defeat the motion, you leave in place the three percent raises.
I also want to state that, um, in the budget, the deputy clerk's, um, salary was much more, it was nine thousand, nine hundred and fifty-three dollars and eighteen cents. Because we hired someone in at forty-five thousand dollars, we are saving that money that we would have spent. If I did not bring this forward. And in doing so, Abby, in her position, does a lot of these items.
And we could put it back to what it was last week and give that deputy clerk position the fifty-four thousand, eight ninety-one, which is what it would be.
Alderman Porter?
Well, it sounds to me like we just need two separate motions, one to approve the whole sheet for the two percent, and then one for the deputy clerk. Maybe it should be two separate motions.
I think we just need a motion to make it two percent across the board.
Then we would be putting the deputy clerk?
Which is what, which is what we had agreed to and passed at Committee of Hope.
Which was a proposal from Committee at Hope.
The only difference is now they're, they're trying to get a, a, a.
Which was a proposal from Committee at Hope, and this is now council, where we make amendments to proposals from Committee of the Whole.
We passed the two percent.
Um, I could see anyone making above seventy thousand getting a one percent, and then anyone other seven, seventy thousand giving a three or four percent instead, which is still keep under it, but then we'd still raise the salaries of the people that are in the lower parts.
Okay, we have a motion, amendment to a motion, uh, on the floor currently. So the appropriate, uh, procedure would be to vote on that amended motion. We have a motion and a second, and so I can call the question and ask for a vote on the amended motion. Would that be the appropriate procedure?
I'd make a motion that anyone above seventy thousand gets a one percent, anyone below gets a four percent.
You're amending the amended motion?
Yep, I am.
Becky?
I have a suggestion. What if you left it at the two percent, however, Myers, Teramina, Casas, and Gilman all went to thirty-five thousand even, and they were all at the exact same thing. Everybody else stays at two, or less, if that's what you wanted. But that would put all four of those people at the exact same rate of pay.
Which creates parity across, uh, the city departments.
I would say no to that. I don't think an entry-level person less than one year should be making the same as people that have served the city for an extended period of time at all.
There's nobody here less than one year. Myers was a year in February, and everybody has different job duties. Um, you have some offices that only have one administrative assistant that job duties don't reflect a different position. Everybody, everybody does different job duties.
And I thought it was made abundantly clear that Ms. Myers is taking on additional duties well above what her current duties are, including supporting the attorney at court, as well as helping with, uh, other, uh, bookkeeping things that were, were the purview of the deputy clerk before. So it's not apples to apples. Yet she's taking on more response, job responsibilities. When someone in a position in a, in a, in a company is, in essence, gets a promotion by taking on additional responsibilities, they get paid more. That, that's, that's the reality of the world. Alderman Porter?
Okay, I don't have a calculator with me, but Becky, can you, uh, tell me, this thirty-five thousand for the assistant clerk, uh, does that include, or that includes the one fifteen per hour? If you take the one fifteen per hour away, uh, what would it come out to be?
It comes to thirty-two thousand, six nineteen.
Okay, so that's with the two percent increase, then?
Just the two percent raise, um, would give her an extra six hundred and thirty-nine dollars and sixty cents. That would be her entire raise with a two percent.
I had a question for Alderman Stevens. When you made the comment, everybody above seventy thousand, to whom were you referring?
Anybody who makes? Anybody who makes more than seventy thousand.
Okay, were you referring to the mayor, perchance? Because the mayor's salary is set a hundred eighty days prior?
Your salary's set, and so is the clerk's, set by ordinance, and it's not them, no.
So a reduction, so what you're saying is, and I'm trying to understand what this is about, really. Because why would we reduce anybody's salary when we already are paying people less than is the comparable?
I said four percent for anybody under.
Well, so why would you reduce somebody's salary above seventy if it's not even a comparable salary?
It's not a reduction, they're getting a one percent raise.
Okay.
And their one percent of a hundred thousand is far more than four percent of thirty thousand or thirty-five thousand.
We're getting a little far afield here. So let's get back to the original amendment. So let's either vote it up or vote it down. So we have a motion.
Alderman Brereton?
Yes, Alderman Brereton.
I'll make a motion to table this.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to table the budget discussion. All those in favor will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
I didn't think a table was anything to be discussed, it was just done.
In the, in the case of the budget?
No.
So, Attorney, are we gonna go ahead and vote on this?
That's up to the council, it's a non-debatable motion.
Well, I think this is absolutely ridiculous to go into. The budget has to be approved by mayor, we, we have no budget. And we're quibbling about pennies here. And we're quibbling for a reason I do not understand, because we have a very healthy general fund, we have the money, it's twelve thousand dollars a year.
And your condescending remarks will get you nowhere.
What condescending remark? I'm, I'm truly steeped.
Right what you're trying to tell us how stupid we are.
No.
And you always do, with your condescending, nasty remarks.
No, I, I think it's the way you interpret when I'm trying to come back to you with the fact of what you're doing, which interrupts our ability to run the city on an equitable basis, which we've been able to do for a lot of years. So that's not condescending, that is pure fact. And so, yes, this is tabled, the budget is tabled, and all those in favor signify, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Flurry?
Nay.
Frank?
Nay.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Nay.
Snow?
No.
Stevens?
What are we voting on?
To table it.
Motion to table.
I thought a table was a non-voting on. No.
Okay.
Avrivalo?
Nay.
Brereton?
Aye.
Four in favor?
I'm sorry, I meant to say, to tape, uh, I voted wrong on that, I meant to say aye. So it's five, five.
So it's up to me. And the motion is to table, I vote nay. Let's do the, let's do the business of the city for the community. So where are we? Yes, Alderman Frank?
Could you have Drella clearly state what we are voting for now that Flurry's amended it?
Yes, that would be my pleasure, please.
Um, I'm not the clerks, but as I recall, I asked the clerk to correct me if I'm wrong, Alderman Flurry made a motion to amend Exhibit B of the budget ordinance. The current Exhibit B that was introduced for first reading, if you recall, contained three percent across-the-board raises for non-union staff. His motion was to amend that Exhibit B and replace it with the revised Exhibit B that was prepared by the finance director and attached to the memo. That revised Exhibit B contained, first, a reduction of that three percent across-the-board raise to two percent, reflecting what the committee wanted to do last week. The second thing reflecting was something that I had not informed of the, of the committee last week, was that the, um, the deputy clerk had retired or was retiring. The clerk has hired a new deputy clerk at a lower salary. So revised Exhibit B reflects the entry-level salary of forty-five thousand dollars for the deputy clerk, which is nine thousand, nine hundred and fifty-three dollars and eighteen cents lower than Sue Embry, the incumbent deputy clerk. I don't know the specifics on the changes to the assistant clerk's salary. I'd ask either, uh, the finance director or the clerk to educate the council on what that change was. But the only changes were, one, the increase as requested by the clerk for the assistant clerk, two, the decrease, uh, in the salary of the deputy clerk to reflect, reflect the fact that we're hiring an entry-level deputy clerk, and three, the reduction of the three percent across-the-board raises to two percent as requested by the Committee of the Whole last week. Or is that two weeks ago, last week?
I have a question.
Two weeks ago.
Question by Alderman Freeman, please proceed.
So Attorney Drella, if this gets voted down with nays, then we would go back and amend it to again reflect two percent increases across the board, correct?
I don't know what the council would do at that point. All I can tell you is that if this is voted down, you have the original Exhibit B still a part of the ordinance, which was three percent raises across the board in the higher salary for the deputy clerk. At that point, it's up to the council what it wants to do.
Alderman Porter?
That would need a motion to amend, thank you.
Okay, are we allowed to make a motion to amend the amendment before we vote on it?
Of course. What's your proposal?
Okay, I would propose that we do the two percent raise for Abby, uh, and then, but not the extra dollar fifteen an hour, and that would put it two percent across the board, uh, and keep it at the two percent. And that would put her salary, um, consistent with what Marcia Freeman is saying, that it would be less than other people that were here longer, so that would be my motion.
I will second that.
So I have a motion and a second to reduce the proposal for, um, the assistant clerk to a two percent raise and not the additional dollar and a half an hour that the proposed raise represents. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approval of the amendment to the amendment will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Nay.
Snow?
No.
Stevens?
Aye.
Avrivalo?
Nay.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Nay.
Six in favor?
So the amendment to the amendment passes, which then leaves us with the original amendment as amended, which would essentially say that we would either vote up Alderman Flurry's amendment or deny Alderman Flurry's amendment. All those in favor of approval, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
I'm sorry, can you, can you read that amendment again?
All right, the amendment's been, I'm sorry, Mr. Matt, I didn't mean to jump in.
Please do.
All right. Um, the original amendment is now modified. It reduces the three, as it stands now, after the most recent amendment to the amendment, it reduces the across-the-board raises from three percent to two percent for all the non-union staff, with the exception of the deputy clerk, which is seeing an additional decrease to forty-five thousand dollars, reflecting the, uh, the new hire.
Alderman Snow?
So generically speaking, while we do by ordinance need to pass the budget, um, the budget is a work in progress continuously. Is there any reason that we can't address the potential disparity in administrative assistance throughout the city um, on a case-by-case basis after the election cycle, um, after everything's settled down, um, in the, either the end of May or beginning of June, and actually look at addressing each of these particular positions and coming up with solutions? Um, because we do, at this point, if I recall right, based on the budget numbers, um, based on what was currently, um, in the deal, we have a forty-four thousand dollar surplus, which would surely cover any of the twelve thousand that would have been included in the, uh, three percent raise. Um, but again, for those in the lower echelons of payroll, like Alderman Stevens was concerned about, maybe we could raise the disparity and try to work our way up to keep good people and to be able to incentivize getting new people when the time comes at a decent rate. Is that a possibility?
That would be a reasonable way of looking at it. I'll have Attorney Drella explain to you the process of reopening the budget.
So I'll start with, the city of Belvidere handles non-union salaries somewhat differently than a lot of municipalities do. We actually make it a part of our budget ordinance. Some communities, they will put a line item, two hundred thousand dollars for salaries in the clerk's office. And then throughout the year, they might adjust that very easily. Since I've been here, this, I shouldn't say since I've been here, but since the two thousands, the city has actually made the individual salaries or pay for each position in the city a part of its budget ordinance. And that's the way to set forth here, and that's why it's an exhibit. Um, obviously you have to do that, as you know, with elected officials, that through a different document. But we don't really have to do it this way, but we do do it this way. So that being said, yes, you, the council is always free to adjust salaries of, I'm gonna be careful here, obviously not elected officials. Appointed officials, you can increase but not decrease during the term of office, that's by statute. But non-appointed official, I'm, I'm, I refer to them as the workabees. They, you can revise up or down as you wish throughout the year. However, because it's part of your budget ordinance, you would have to amend your budget to do it in this case. To amend a budget requires a two-thirds supermajority vote of the city council when you do it. So yes, you can do it. Uh, the way we've set it up, it becomes a little more cumbersome, a little more difficult because of that supermajority vote, but it is possible.
Okay. So let's get back to the, the, the motion at hand. So we have approved the amendment to the amended motion that Alderman Flurry proposed. So Mr. Drella, would you really restate what the consequences are now in the vote that we are going to take? Of voting on Alderman Flurry's amended motion, which has been amended.
I can't recall, we haven't voted on that yet?
Yeah.
I think we just voted on that.
We voted on the amendment to the amended motion.
Okay, so we, we have not voted on the amendment yet. So the, I'll restate that as best I can, again, I don't have, I don't actually have all those numbers in front of me. But it would be to reduce from three percent to two percents, if you, if you pass this amendment, you're reducing three percent across-the-board raises to two percent. And you'd be reducing the salary of the deputy clerk from whatever it is in the existing Exhibit B down to forty-five thousand dollars, which is a savings of nine thousand nine hundred fifty-three dollars and eighteen cents.
So is that clear, is everybody clear on what we're voting on? Alderman Stevens, are you good? Okay. So the motion on the floor, all those in favor of approval of the amended motion on the floor, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Nay.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
O'Revolo?
Nay.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Okay, the amendment is passed. So that brings us back to the ordinance, the budget ordinance itself. Are there any other proposed amendments to the budget ordinance as it stands currently? Alderman Porter?
Well, not necessarily an amendment, but I just have a comment here on the budget overall. I see that the library director, you know, they made a big deal about this whole thing about that they weren't gonna put that whole eighteen thousand to the library director, but I see in this latest amendment that we have that it's still at seventy-two thousand, with, which shows the seven, or the eighteen thousand dollar increase. So I'm just, I know there's nobody here from the library, but maybe Becky can talk about it.
So the director who was there is no longer there. He left. So now they are advertising for a new director, which, from my understanding, was their intent all along, was to get the, the salary for the position up to a level where they were able to, uh, to receive more competent, um, people to apply for the position, not necessarily that particular person. So the salary, I, and I have not seen it advertised, I'm not sure what their salary range is, but I think it was, it was their intent to try and, and offer a higher salary to get more people to apply for the position, so that they don't have this constant turnover all the time. So the, the person who was here is no longer there, he left, uh, it was about almost a month ago. Yep.
And I believe that that seventy-two thousand is the upper end of their range.
Correct, yeah, that was the high.
Depending on the candidates that they receive in court.
Yeah, I have not seen it.
Anybody else? Yes, sir?
Well, I'd just like to say that I think maybe we should put this on the agenda sometime, maybe after the budget or whatever, for further discussion of what to do about the library, because I think the city council should have more say. And, no, Attorney Drella said that we can't do, change their budget, or we have to vote on it as, as it's submitted. And, uh, I don't know if we need to split the library off into its own entity, or, or if we can absorb it into the city completely, so we do have some control over the budget. But I think we do need to discuss it at some point.
Okay. We can do that. So we have the approval of the budget ordinance as it stands now on the table. All those in favor of approval of the budget ordinance will?
I have, uh, something to say about the budget.
Please proceed.
Thank you. So my, um, my problem with this budget, um, and I'm gonna need Director Anderson to answer for this. Um, in our capital, we have nothing in this fiscal year for our south side flooding issue besides a hundred thousand dollars for basically a, um, campaign of telling people why we need to raise our taxes. Um, January twenty-third of twenty-eighteen, we paid around eighty, upwards of eighty thousand dollars to do a slump, slump study in Area One, which consisted of a hundred and seventy-eight homes that were not even affected by the flooding, because they were in Ward Three. Um, uh, by March fifteenth of twenty-eighteen, um, the south side storm water study was completed by Baxter and Woodman. Um, fast forward to November seventh of twenty-eighteen, our Sixth Street low-flow channel final, uh, design engineering, we paid CES twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars to complete that. Um, and then in June of twenty-nineteen, a whole year after our study was completed by Baxter and Woodman, Marengo was awarded twenty-eight million dollars to fix, um, their water and sewer system, and Belvidere got nothing. I called our state Senator Dave Seiberson and our state representative Joe Sosnowski and asked why. Um, and apparently Belvidere never submitted anything to be, um, examined for, uh, a part of that pie. And when I inquired at City Hall, I was told that the, the storm water study wasn't ready yet. But as I said, a whole year prior, um, this south side storm water study that Baxter and Woodman did, um, included everything from the watershed study area, our existing drainage system, our system deficiencies, theoretical detention analysis, data collection and review, um, our hy, hydraulic analysis, hydraulic analysis, our model collaboration, critical duration, existing conditions, optimizer software, everything, um, including our detention volume required to meet our needs, existing conditions, flood depths, at flooding problem areas, proposed conditions of flood depths at problem areas, and an overview of the engineer's estimate of probable cause, which also included study area maps, the locations, um, uh, drainage basin, uh, schematic models, um, the hundred-year level service plan, and all types of phases, including appendixes with historical photos and documents, rainfall data, modeling input, site analysis, cost estimates, you name it, was all included in this Baxter and Woodman plan, which was ready to go a whole year prior to Marengo being awarded twenty-eight million dollars. Now, we're fast forwarding to July sixth of twenty-twenty, and Fairgram is, um, doing a feasibility study, which they want a hundred thousand dollars to basically market, um, the people, the taxpayers of Belvidere, as to why they need to pay more taxes to get their flooding issue under control. Meantime, um, we have nothing in our capital until twenty-twenty-three, but our Logan Avenue improvements, miraculously, um, we were able to, after our council voted it down, were able to find upwards of two million dollars from the state. So I need some money somewhere to, uh, and I believe that Mayor Chamberlain also said we have an excess of eleven million dollars sitting in our general fund. I need some money somewhere to be coming to, um, this south side storm water flooding issue in this budget this year, fiscal year.
Brent, please clarify for the Alderman, uh, her.
Thank you.
I just feel this town has been kicked down the road for the four years that I've been there. It's been, I mean, we've done the Bellwood Detention, but that's still not even completed. For four years, I've been, you know, the south side has had an issue, and it's just been kicked, 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 kicked down the road. And now we've come to this year where there is basically nothing in our capital budget to address any of it.
Okay, so, um, just, I guess clarification to begin with between the storm water, south side storm water improvements and the storm water utility. Really kind of two different things, however, the storm water utility would be utilized to help fund improvements in the south side storm water, uh, study. You are correct, Baxter and Woodman did that storm water study for us, outlined the improvements that would need to be made on the south side to bring, basically bring the south side into compliance with our current standards that we require of, of new construction. Um, will it take care of any and all flooding conditions? No, it depends on Mother Nature has ultimate control of that. But it would basically bring it, bring that south side up into the, into compliance with what we require of new development. Uh, so the money that's in the budget for the storm water utility would be to, to finish that process out. As you know, that process was put on hold through the COVID-nineteen restrictions. So I would assume that as those restrictions can, will be lifted, as more vaccines and things become, um, available to everybody, uh, eventually we will be able to finish that component out. As far as getting back to the storm water utility, our next project in the storm water utility, and the city council has already approved the preliminary engineering for that project, would be the Fifth Avenue, uh, bypass storm sewer. Um, and I don't have the storm water study in front of me, but if you pull that out, one of the next projects, uh, after the two ponds that we will finish this spring, uh, as soon as weather permits, that pond work will be done and completed. Um, we will be moving on to the Fifth Avenue bypass. Uh, the storm water study originally called for, for detention area to be utilized around the Logan School property area based on existing physical, um, construction at that location. A retention facility is not feasible. However, we have determined that we can put in a seventy-two inch equivalent bypass from Seventh Avenue down to the river, create a new outlet to the river, um, to more than make up for that required detention to resolve that issue. The estimated cost of that project is four and a half million dollars. I can tell you that, uh, we have, the preliminary engineering is proceeding as we speak. We have gotten temporary or conditional approval of, of, uh, putting that storm sewer pipe underneath the railroad tracks, which was a major hurdle to, to complete that. We have also, uh, making inquiries on, uh, acquiring some property adjacent to the river to provide for that outlet. That information will be coming back to the committee, uh, probably e, either in May's public works meeting, perhaps as early as, uh, our second meeting here in April, our next committee meeting. I still have to talk to, uh, one other property owner about, uh, easement access across their property for the pipe installation. So once we have that, once we have that work completed, um, then we can begin the construction process for that. Again, the price tag on that project is four and a half million dollars. Uh, if we can, if we can institute that project sooner, my anticipation was we would not be able to do that physically until next year, uh, during the next construction season, which would take us into the next budget. But however, if we are able to proceed and, and get the necessary approvals and councils on board, we can certainly bring that, uh, project, uh, to council sooner and get approval, not necessarily need a budget. Uh, I don't think a, a budget amendment to do that, but we have funds available, and, and I believe council could go ahead and approve that project. So we are working on it, we are not putting it off. Uh, council has already, um, um, provided that input to, to me as far as what project we're gonna do next. As you recall, we were discussing whether we were gonna do the West Harrison rehabilitation, which had a storm sewer component on it as well. Uh, but based on my recommendation, the council did, uh, authorize approval of the, of the preliminary engineering work on the Fifth Avenue Storm Sewer Bypass, which will also be a reconstruction of Fifth Avenue from Seventh, uh, Street to, um, Locust Street.
Brent, would you directly address the timing sequence? A lot's being made about the, the Marengo, uh, project that was approval. Would you, would you address the timing sequence and why we were not in the running for that kind of funding for that purpose at that time?
Well, and I think my understanding, the Marengo proposal, the Marengo funding was for a wastewater treatment plant. And it was utilizing a whole different funding system than what the, our, our south side, our storm water improvements. Um, I know, uh, coming up here, well, I don't know for sure, but outlined in the president's new, uh, infrastructure stimulus, there's supposed to be some additional funds coming out for some additional work, and I think storm sewer is included in that. But I think the Marengo project, if I'm not mistaken, is for sanitary sewer improvements, and they're basically utilizing the same, same funds that we are utilizing at our wastewater treatment plant for our four million dollar project, which we will have our pre-construction meeting on tomorrow, actually. So, so that, uh, project is moving forward.
And I believe at that time, the, the governor established a new six-year, uh, infrastructure plan uh, in that timeframe, and Belvidere and Boone County plan in that timeframe. And Belvedere and Boone County were on the six-year plan, talked about a hundred and forty million dollars that was going to come for widening State Street to four lanes all the way to Belvedere was part of that funding. And so, as always, when you get promises on a, on a time plan from the state, you hope that they get to it before the next plan gets reinvented. So.
And then I guess in addition too, I think you mentioned also Logan Avenue. As far as Logan Avenue goes, the original question, I think back to council when we had our first discussions, was whether we do a reconstruction of Logan Avenue or rehabilitation of Logan Avenue. And then again, I think the council's decision then was, we even looked at downsizing, right sizing, if you will, Logan Avenue to a three-lane section. And I think ultimately the council decided to do the rehabilitation option on that project at about a two million dollar price tag to do that work. And I guess since that was approved, the funding became available through the state, through additional loan funds, through stimulus from the state, MFT funds to utilize. And that's what, again, council has approved use of those funds on the Logan Avenue project, for which I will have an update for council at our next committee meeting.
And finally, the Fair Graham Study has not been presented in, in its fullness to the council, nor to the public. A series of public meetings was scheduled for doing that. It was an alternative method of finance to possibly pay for some of that work that, that we need to do. And so it's not been presented to the community. It's not been fully presented to the council. So I, I don't understand negative comments about something that never has had an opportunity to be fully presented.
Well, we didn't, we didn't present it because we voted it down to spend the money to present it. But...
Same thing.
What's going on with the Sixth Street Low Flow Channel then, Brent?
Unfortunately, the Sixth Street Low Flow Channel is caught up in the bureaucratic process of, of environmental review. It has been determined through the Corps of Engineers that we cannot put a paved low-flow channel in that. They have determined that that is an intermittent stream. And for us to be able to basically treat it as the rest of the, the former open ditch section through Sheffield Green that was ultimately piped and, and, and put underground, in order for us to be able to do something like that with this section would require us to pay, I would say, exorbitant fees into the wetlands banks based on their determination that it's an intermittent stream. So at this point, we are still exploring our options of what are, what's available to us. One option that's looking fairly attractive is, is almost taking an opposite approach from one side, one way to the other way. And that is making sure that it's guaranteed to be wet, I wouldn't want to say all the time, but most of the time. And by doing that, that would eliminate the possibility of vegetation growing through the bottom of the channel itself, thereby keeping the channel open enough the majority of the time, so that it would not reduce any discharges through stormwater events. It's been a long process. And again, we're still working our way through with the Corps of Engineers on that matter. As, and I give you an example. We don't need to have any authorizations. We can go out and dig the biggest hole. We can dig along that channel, make it as deep as we want, and we don't need to do a permit. We don't need to do anything. But as soon as we want to fill or put a stone base in the bottom, a working platform, if you will, so when it does rain or if it, if it's still wet, we need to go out and do maintenance. We can still get access to the channel. But as soon as we want to do any kind of filling whatsoever, then it kicks in all the regulations and all the things that we have to go by. So we have done some intermittent work out there, removed some cattails, cleaned up some areas. But we're still ultimately working through with the Corps of Engineers to come up with a final plan of attack that they are going to find acceptable and amenable to and actually issue us a permit for. And there again, trying to keep our costs down as far as wetland banks and what we can create or not create, what we'd have to pay for or not pay for.
Okay. So we haven't scrapped that. We're just looking for alternative methods.
Correct. And like I said, we've gone from, from one extreme to the other extreme in looking at all the options that are available to us.
Okay. Thank you.
So do we have any further amendments, proposed amendments to the budget as stated at this point? Hearing not all those in favor of approval, will when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
No.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Brerton?
No.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman? Seven in favor?
The budget for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two has been passed. Thank you. Next, under item C, we have ordinance five-thirty-H, a second reading, an ordinance amending sections twenty-six dash eighty and twenty-six dash eighty-two of the City of Belvedere Municipal Code to eliminate expiration of a business registration license. They have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
A motion by Arivolo, second by Snow. Additional questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor?
I had a question.
Please proceed.
So we're going to keep the business registration. It's just that it doesn't have to be renewed, correct?
Attorney Drella, would you clarify for her, please?
I'm actually trying to pull it up to second.
All right.
So the only two changes occur in two different sections, but you are correct, Alderman Freeman, that after a lot of discussion, the committee had moved forward eliminating the requirement to renew the business registration license each year. Once they register, they'll be in effect. So what it does is in section twenty-six dash eighty, it just simply says if a existing business moves to a new location, they'll reapply so that we know where they're at in their new location. In section twenty-six dash eighty-two, it references a renewal, or eliminates the reference to renewal application in subsection C.
Does that clarify things for you, Alderman Freeman?
It does, but I would like to make a motion to repeal ordinance five-thirty-H.
So I have a motion to repeal the business registration license. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Alderman Stevens. Questions, comments, or further discussion?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. Could she restate the motion?
She wants to repeal the whole ordinance.
What, what ordinance did she refer to? Okay. Five-thirty-H does not yet exist because you're passing that tonight. That's why, and that clicked in the back of my brain. Alderman Freeman, what is your intent with your motion?
I would like to repeal the whole business registration license in its entirety.
Okay. Hang on one second.
Would you share with us your thinking on that, please?
I don't think it's right to pick and choose which ordinances are enforced or who they're enforced upon. So either, you know, I, I was able, I wasn't at the committee the whole meeting on this, but I was able to watch it later. And it basically boils down to, you know, some people get enforced, other people don't, some people are registered, other people aren't. And I don't believe we need ordinances on the books that are pick and choose who gets fined, who gets, which ordinances are actually enforced, and which ones is like pick and choose who we enforce them on.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, if, if Alderman Freeman's intent is to repeal the business registration license requirement, Alderman Freeman, the best way to phrase it probably to repeal and reserve Article Three, General Business Registration License of Chapter Twenty-Six of the City of Belvedere Municipal Code.
Okay. So be it.
We have, still have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the repeal, will when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Porter?
Nay.
Ratcliffe?
Nay.
Snow?
Nay.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Nay.
Mr. Brerton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Nay.
Frank?
Nay.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee? Three in favor?
Repeal. So that motion is lost. So we're back to the, the second reading of an ordinance amending to not have an annualized renewal of the ordinance. I already had a motion and second. All those in favor of approval of that amendment, will when your name is called, signify. Alderman Porter, please.
Let me ask Attorney Drella this. Are we allowed to make an amendment that says that we cannot use this law? I don't know exactly how to state this, but until we get everybody on board, all the businesses registered, can we make it so we cannot use the ordinance, you know, enforce it until everybody's on board?
Let me start with saying, you're the city council. You recommend motions and do what you wish. I would not recommend that now, and I probably wouldn't recommend it period for a couple of reasons. But first, I wouldn't recommend it now. That is something I think the council would want flesh out and probably ask me to research and perhaps bring back to committee to discuss doing that in the future, because I think it may have consequences that we haven't thought about. Right now, we have a motion on the floor, which is clear and cut, but discussed at committee. You may want to bring that kind of concept back to committee in the future and amend it then. But briefly, just put a caveat or a thought in your head, if you put in place an ordinance that says you can't enforce it until everybody's already in compliance, then you can never enforce
I have a question.
Alderman Freeman, please proceed.
Section twenty-six dash eighty-two says, section eight says, any person whose business registration license is subject to revocation or suspension is entitled to a hearing before a commission comprised of the mayor and two most senior aldermen. So how are we suspending or revoking business registration licenses to people that don't have them in the first place? We're only picking on people that do?
No. And as you'll recall, there's two different portions. We went through this about six months ago. And then previously, when we adopted the ordinance, there's one section that deals with people that already have a license, and they are accused of doing something that would justify potential suspension or revocation. In those cases, they go to this commission. In cases where they don't have a license in the first place, you recall the origin, we were required to send them something like ninety days' notice, and that was reduced recently. We give them notice of that. That never goes to the commission. If they don't have a license and they don't comply within the timeframe set forth by the council, I want to say it was ten days or twenty days, something like that, I'd have to look it up. If they don't comply, then I take them to circuit court for a violation of the city's codes. And the minimum fine for violating the city codes, generally it's a hundred dollars per day. I'd have to look at this ordinance and review it. These are not things that were on the agenda for tonight, so I didn't. But that is fined them by the court, because no license exists, which the commission can revoke. So it's two different processes. If you don't have a license, and we're going to enforce it to require you to get a license, it goes to the circuit court. If you have a license, what we try to do is keep the costs for the defendant down by not dragging through the court process and bring that to the commission.
Does that answer your question? Okay. Any additional questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing not all those in favor of approval, will when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
No.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Brerton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion is approved with nine aye votes. Thank you. That brings us to number ten, new business, motions forwarded from committee, the whole public safety, finance and personnel of March twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one. Motion will be presented by the chairman of Public Safety Committee, Rick Brerton. Mr. Brerton, you have the floor.
Thank you. A, motion to accept the donation of one hundred dollars from Paul and Dorothy Hale for a purchase to be determined at a later date.
Motion out of committee. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor. Hearing not all those in favor of approval, will when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Brerton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously. That brings us to the end of our agenda this evening. Ladies and gentlemen, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.